I would call to order the August 14th meeting of the Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sharp?
Here.
Commissioner Van Buren is here. Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bartel?
Here.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Here. Normally at this point, we all stand and cite the Pledge of Allegiance, but first we'd like to have the Community Development Director Bruce Sylvester make a statement.
Sure, I just wanted to make a quick announcement. We maybe should have included this on the agenda, but didn't. But Doug Carmichael has very recently been appointed as the new chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is to replace Greg Pill, who I believe most of us know passed away unexpectedly about two months ago. So this is his first night. We all appreciate his help, and I just wanted people to formally hear that he has been designated as the new chairperson.
Thank you. Could we all stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while you're standing, and staff as well, anyone who's giving testimony tonight has to be sworn in, so please raise your right hand. I swear that I will tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Thank you. And cell phones, pagers, anything, please.
Silence.
Sarah, did you sign in? A reminder that anyone who's going to testify, please sign in at the podium and... Because that's the rules of a public hearing. Our first order of business is approval of minutes from the June 26th, 2019 regular meeting. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. Questions on the...
Questions?
Roll call.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Chairman Carmichael?
Next item of business, we have an open forum, so if there's anyone here on any item, anyone from the village who would like to speak on any subject that's not on our agenda tonight, now's your chance. You folks, okay, seeing none, we will move on. I'll review quickly the procedure, the way we run the open forum in the hearing. First, I will identify the petitioner and the petition and request him or her, the team, to come forward to the podium and make their presentation request. And then I'll turn to the staff and request their input, the background of the issue and their technical recommendations and comments. And then the petitioner would get a chance to... Oh, and then we'll have the public, anyone from the public who wants to speak regarding that issue. Once they've done that, the petitioner has a chance to rebut or respond to the public comments and questions. We have the village attorney here with us to give us guidance and counsel at all times and keep us on the straight and narrow, and he does, and we appreciate that. After the public is finished, we'll turn to the commissioners, and each commissioner will get a chance to ask questions, make comments, statements, go through, have our discussion, and when we're finished with that, we will then close the public hearing and have the commissioners vote on the issue. Once the vote is finished, yea or nay, the petitioner will then be advised that he or she can go forward to the village board when scheduled. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory commission. We are not the final authority. We give our recommendation to the village board, and they have the real hammer, as it were. And questions on that?
Just to point out one other clarification, if I may.
Certainly.
Whenever there's a variance or a special use before this commission, it requires findings of fact. This commission has findings of fact in front of them on both the variance and the special use that's on the agenda tonight. A vote in favor of an item that's on the agenda tonight is also a vote in favor of the findings of fact that this commission has, and a denial would be a rejection of those findings of fact. They will not be read separately.
Okay, and before we start under new business, because the second and third items on our agenda tonight are essentially internal, with your concurrence, I'm going to move PZ 19020, the final issue, up, and we'll do that after the Oxford Bank. We'll do that second, so that Raising Cane's doesn't have to sit here all night waiting to make their presentation. All in favor of doing that, say aye.
Aye.
Done. Okay, first issue, PZ 19-017, request from Oxford Bank applicant regarding the property located at 6495 South Cass Avenue for the following. Item A, special use permit to operate a bank, including accessory drive-in facilities and a bank ATM. Item B, a site and landscaping plan. And representing the bank, sir?
Thank you. My name is Robert Anderson. I'm a senior vice president of Oxford Bank and Trust. I started with the bank 18 years ago last month, which was about the time we took occupancy of that building. We opened it for operations in January of 2002. So my history with the bank kind of coincides with us opening our branch back at that time here in Westmont. We, just in the way of a real quick introduction, we're a locally owned bank, meaning in the Chicago area. We have six branches overall. Westmont, over the years, our location here has grown to be our third largest branch in terms of deposits. So this has been a very successful enterprise for us, and we truly enjoy being in Westmont, and I hope I can do whatever I can to help get everything done that needs to be done with regard to our special use needs and your needs for that to be done.
Thank you. Staff?
We received this application about a month ago, and in researching, we realized that the special use permit had not been granted to this business upon taking possession of the property. There was a bank earlier, prior to the 19 years that Oxford Bank was there, called the Style Bank. They received a special use permit. However, our zoning code requires that upon changing ownership, the new owner would apply for a special use permit of their own. So this is basically getting that zoning requirement rectified, and we see no objections at all to their request, and we have no requirements either.
Thank you. At this time, we would open up for public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to comment, yea or nay, pro, con, no opinions, none observed? Okay. We will start with the commissioners, then. We'll start with Commissioner Sharp.
I have no comments. I'm in favor of approving the special use.
That was quick. Commissioner Bartel?
I would echo the same thing. I'm in favor of approval.
Commissioner Lavoy?
I don't have any issues either, Mr. Chair.
You have two pages, notes?
No. No, I just think it's pretty straightforward, and it's... I don't see any problem with it.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Buren?
Yeah. The question I have is with the landscape plan, we're calling for a fence along, you know, along the eastern boundary?
In our initial research, we discovered that the comprehensive plan has a requirement of buffering and screening the businesses along Cass from the residential areas and the school to the east. And so we prepared a staff report with that requirement. However, driving through the area, we discovered a very healthy wall of evergreen trees that are quite tall, and there is no way that a fence is required.
Okay, great, because that's what I noticed today, and I said, "Why?" Other than that, no problem.
Those evergreens predate us owning the operating office of the building.
And they're healthy, it's a nice looking buffer. And one question for you, sir. Have you... What improvements, or are you making any improvements, or have you made any improvements to the property facility?
We have done some internal work from time to time, but as far as the property itself, the footprint that we have there, really, no, we have not, that I can recall offhand. We... What we basically have there now is what we had when we opened up shop some 19 years ago.
Well, I like the property. I mean, it's clean, it's well taken care of. Your parking lot is in great condition, and it's just thumbs up all the way, so...
Appreciate that.
Yeah. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add or subtract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Oh, you want to talk too? I apologize.
No, I'm fine.
Commissioner Thomas?
The trees are in great shape, and you don't need a fence, and I support your action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve Planning and Zoning Commission 19017, request from Oxford Bank applicant regarding the property located 6495 South Cass Avenue for special A, a special use permit to operate a bank, including an accessory drive-in facilities and a bank ATM. Comments, questions on the...
Need a motion and a second first.
You're right.
Then we take comments.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Bartel, seconded by Commissioner Sharp. Roll call, please.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Paragraph B, site and landscape plan. You have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Sharp, seconded by Commissioner Bartel. Questions, comments on the issue? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
And Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, sir, you have our approval, and staff will contact you when you're on the schedule for the village board.
Village Board.
And it'll be here in this room on a Thursday evening.
Well, I look forward to hearing from you, and I appreciate all of you with your support tonight. Thank you very much.
This was an easy one.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Glad it was.
Next issue, Planning and Zoning Commission 19020, a request from Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers regarding the restaurant located at 60 West 63rd Street, Westmont, for the following, all in the C1 Commercial Business District. A, zoning code variance request to increase the number and size of allowable signs on the premises.
My name is Sarah Holmes. I've been with AGI, which is the sign representative for Raising Cane's for five years now. Raising Cane's is a company, they don't like to say they're the traditional fast food because it's really a restaurant feel. They want the community and everyone else engaged. It was started back in 1996, so it's grown very substantially, and they are extremely excited about being in Westmont. Just to quickly go through some slides, this is our existing site. We have just got the foundation down, and some of the items that we are discussing are the artwork pieces that we are proposing on the building, which is in line with our standard prototypical buildings that you can see throughout nationwide, Raising Cane's. We requested the variance on the grounds that there is really no restrictions for artwork. There's nothing that we felt would say that, no, these pieces weren't allowed. They give back in meaning. They are very symbolic to what we try to give to the community. So we have the One Love piece, which is not illuminated internally. It's mounted on the side of the building, and for this particular site, it's facing away from the main street, so it's facing towards a parking area.
Could you give a little more detail on Love piece?
Yes.
What a Love piece is?
So it is essentially all these little components. The fish represents the salmon fishing that Todd, the owner, Todd Graves, he... That was one of the jobs that he worked on to fund the first Cane's back in 1996. Construction hat is also... He was on an oil rig. The disco ball is kind of his theme. He wants to have fun. He wants the building to be fun. He wants it energetic. The dog is what Raising Cane's is actually named after. It was his first pet. And then one is the one love of just producing quality chicken. So each one is made out of a metal piece, and then it's pin mounted into the building.
Thank you.
Yes. The Blue Dog has no copy. It doesn't clarify what it is. It's just the dog, basically. But it is on a hard print that is attached to poles on the outside of the building. And for this one, it's... There is one on the front of the building and on the side for the drive-through, so it would be visible closely to just people walking in the building. I should say that this one also is not internally illuminated. The other piece of it is the One Love canopy letters, and this is with the new patio set. We started adding patios about a little over a year ago, and they really wanted to bring a feel and outdoor vibe to the community and have additional outdoor seating, a garage door, trying to just bring that relaxed feeling it's more than a fast food. And so this is the new standard signage that's above the patio. This would be mounted on a raceway, and the letters are shown internally illuminated.
And it says One Love?
And that's all it has.
If I may interrupt, is there other signage that says Raising Cane's, et cetera, like wall signs that you can show also, so we get a full...
Yes. So these are the elevations, and we have a custom logo that we designed specifically for the city of Westmont. And then, as you can see on the front elevation, that is where the One Love letters would be, and then we have... This is where the Blue Dog would be. Going around to the drive-through side would be the One Love heart and the Blue Dog. And then there's also a logo sign on the side entry. We do have two interior window signs, which are both under, I think, 5.5 square feet. One says open, and one says chicken fingers.
Can you go back one page?
Is that a window there where the Love piece is?
This piece is a garage door that opens.
And is it just an edifice to its right? Is that an entrance? In your petition, you referred to two main entrances?
Yes.
Is it one on the south side and one on the east side? I don't know whether to ask staff this or you, the... What is the total number of signs or square footage that's proposed versus what's allowed by our sign regulation?
I don't know the square footage is. I think the easiest way to think about this is there are four signs that we have determined are permitted, and we've already begun the process of issuing permits for those four signs. Two of them are the ovals that say Raising Cane's.
Yes.
Correct.
And then those are mounted on the outside of the building. And then there are two other signs we've approved that are in the windows. One says open, and that's allowed no matter what, and then the other one says chicken fingers. So those four signs, we've already permitted. They meet all of our requirements, although I don't know the square footage of each one or the total. The issue that we've struggled with is all of the other signage is above and beyond what our ordinances allow, and we had an internal discussion about whether it's artwork or signage.
That's the question.
And what we decided, or what I decided, is that it is, in fact, signage, even though it's artwork. And just to make this simple, I thought if a little new restaurant in the 1950s came around, called McDonald's, and said, "We just want a nice artistic M on the side," it's just a symbol for us, it's artwork, I thought that would be a comparable example. Raising Cane's is a very successful company. They're growing, and in 10 years, One Love might be like, "Have it your way." It might become associated with their business. So that's what helped me decide that it's signage or the logo of the dog. So for that reason, I said, "We are going to count it as..." Or we're going to classify it as signage, and therefore it exceeds the allowable amount, which is what triggered the requirement for a variance. So I just wanted to give you that background of the process that led us to tonight.
And so, including all of the various artworks, banners, whatever, how many signs are proposed versus the exterior signs that are allowed? Because it sounds like two wall signs would be perhaps allowed?
So I believe in... Malini, correct me if I'm wrong, two wall signs are allowed, and we've approved two, and then there are some window signs that we've approved. So that's four total. And then in addition to those four that we've already determined are permitted, they are requesting five additional items tonight, for a total of nine or four tonight?
Four.
Four tonight, and that would be the heart shape, the two dogs, and then the One Love. So it would be a total of eight signs, although two of those are inside a window behind the glass. But those are being... Including those in the count of eight signs.
So it sounds to me like something that we need to come to some agreement on is if they are all signs, if we agree that they're all signs, or...
If I can disagree respectfully, I think you've got to defer to staff
Yeah.
...when they make an interpretation. It's not really this body's job to interpret the code and decide what's a sign and what's not a sign. If an applicant disagrees with the staff interpretation, they can appeal to this body, the staff interpretation, and say, "We don't need a variance. This is just artwork." They've chosen not to appeal the staff determination. They've chosen to come before you for a variance. So accept the staff recommendation as true. If in the future you want to consider a discussion on artwork and a tax amendment, you can, but I don't think it's your purview to interpret the code or second guess staff's decision in that regard.
Okay, thank you. So where does that put us?
So the applicant, they're presenting what they would like to have on the exterior of their building, and based on staff's determination or interpretation of the code, they need a variance from the sign code if they're going to be allowed to have the One Love and the heart shape and the two dogs, in addition to the signs that we've already permitted.
And maybe I'm getting a little technical, but just so we understand, usually we consider exterior signs, so whether they're monument signs, wall signs, things like that, or in this case, logos, artworks. You mentioned interior, like window type signs, or maybe they're actually on the exterior, but usually those are excluded from the actual sign count when we talk about exterior signs. Is that fair to say that really there are two exterior signs permitted as of right, and they are requesting, I think it would be...
Six total.
Six.
Five additional or...
Four.
Four additional, six total.
Six in all.
Okay, thank you.
Then you want to ask about the hardship of the applicant, Doug?
Well, yeah, I can look at the...
One of the requirements for variance applications is to provide a narrative whereby the applicant would let us know what the hardships are of the property, or financial, or any other type of constraint related to the property, on why the variance would be justifiable. So that would be what the hardship question would be about.
And your explanation of hardship is in the findings of fact?
Well, she needs to explain to you what they are. Let her explain.
Okay, please.
So we pulled the actual sign code, and we reviewed that, and there was no terminology currently in the code that expressly prohibited any graphics or art being on the building, and that's what we feel is a requirement to have a hardship in this area, because it's not expressly allowed or disallowed.
But knowing what the staff interpretation is, what is your hardship to keep the logos and artwork?
Well, we would like to appeal their decision in that aspect, because when we started this project, it was over a year ago, and neither one of them were on the initial design, and we actually had a different planner that we were working with, Khan, and his suggestion, he actually was encouraging us to seek a variance and was even very willing to help us get to that point with the additional signs. So Cane's made their determination to even build this building off of the recommendations by the city.
Which was to apply for a variance?
Yes.
Which you've done now.
Correct.
So what's the hardship for having the additional signage?
He felt it was artwork at the time, so that it would be very easy to contradict and say that it was not signage.
Okay, so, prior to applying for signed permits, new staff is in, staff reviewed this and determined that what you're calling artwork is more like a logo. It's a company symbol, just like a shell symbol on a gas station canopy or other similar logos, the M for McDonald's, and it constitutes a sign. So, with that being said, if you want to, you've applied for a variance, which is great. This commission will consider it, but you have to present facts to this commission showing a hardship, not just, hey, here's what previous staff said, but why do you need all of these signs?
They're part of our national logo, and they help direct traffic to the building. And that encourages further drive to, to the building, and it also encourages people to come eat. And Cane's is a big community member and would like to be able to give back through their business. The success of the business is driven by Cane's, and they've got proof that through marketing, through logos, through symbols, through colors, that those items are related to Cane's, and they would like that to be their driving force to success. And so, realistically, it's that they want this building to be successful. In order to do that, seeing the dog, if you're a longtime Cane's fan and you want to come to the restaurant, you see the dog, you know exactly what it is. It's, it's a force to anybody driving by. If you don't eat Cane's, you won't know what that is, because you haven't been in the building, you haven't felt the culture of it.
Thank you. And if I may also, just to flush it out a little bit, can you, and you kind of alluded to this, with, you've got signage on various sides of the building and a drive-through. Is there anything about the building configuration or how the lot is situated in relation to other buildings and roadways that would justify the sign?
So, the drive-through is really only towards the parking area. So, the drive-through, the Blue Dog, the One Love heart is specifically just for the people, the, in the drive-through, the aesthetic. We, Cane's likes to play music as you're going through the drive-through, so you have the whole Cane's experience, even if you're in your car. And so, that just brings you into the building for them. They, that's how they see it. They don't see it as, hey, the person down the road, come on in. They're appealing to the person that's already in their drive-through that's picking up their order. This is symbolic of the culture that's inside this building.
Is there a monument sign?
There, there will be, and it will be through the, this is through a development. So, I think that part has already been initially approved through a development, but it's not permitted in itself.
So, it's not totally strictly dedicated to Cane's? It could have other?
There, they do have individual pad monument per the developer's allowance, and there is also multi-tenant signs, there's for the entirety of the development.
Well, go to the commissioners.
Yeah, go to staff, please.
Please, staff.
My only comment is, staff doesn't really have strong feelings about this either way. We do consider them signs, and if people are comfortable granting the variance, that's what it would require. We're not opposed to the signs, but we're not recommending approval either. It's more of a decision for you guys in terms of what you're comfortable allowing for this particular business, and then keeping in mind what kind of a precedent that might set for other businesses in the future.
Okay, let's go to the commissioners.
Actually, public. Can you hear the public?
I thought we did.
No.
Sorry.
No, he did. He did. No, no one responded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
This item?
I, I don't, I don't think he did on this item. I think I jumped...
Let's open it up again, to be clear.
Okay. Any one of the public like to comment on this? You in the back row, Mr. Forsberg, you have an opinion one way or the other? Okay, then we'll go to the, to the commissioners. Commissioner Bartel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do all of your other restaurants have the same signs, the dog and the heart and the heart shape and One Love? There's one on Roosevelt Road, am I right, Glen Ellen?
There will be, yes.
Will be? It's being built?
Yes.
Will that have the same signs?
I can't comment specifically on that site, because I wasn't prepared for that one.
Okay.
I do know that it does have our standard Raising Cane's logo desk, and it does have additional signs that are in line with the prototypical Cane's.
So, other Cane's that are not necessarily that one, do they have those? And I guess what I'm getting at is, are the signs that you're talking about in all the restaurants?
I would say that they're in a very, probably in about 85% of our restaurants. Generally, the ones that we have, the One Love heart in particular, is a replacement for mural. So, we actually have a hand-painted mural that generally goes on that area with the city name. But we were encouraged to use art pieces during our initial meeting with the planner at the very beginning stages. As far as the One Love over the patio, that piece was integrated back in July of last year, and it has been on a majority of all the sites we've built with patios. The Blue Dog has been integrated into the buildings for, well, at least five years since I've been with Cane's.
So, it's consistent?
Correct.
There's some consistency there. What, I know you've, I know it sells chicken, but what else would this sell?
It's, Cane's only serves chicken, and that is the main staple. That's the One Love.
So, there's really no connection between chicken and the signs? The signs are strictly the, the owner's?
Dog.
Dog.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I know you're not serving dog. I know that.
I know.
That's what I figured out. I guess my, my comment is, there, there's a concern I have regarding other businesses with this, this precedent, that the signs are unusual, and as I watch them, or I see them, I don't see a connection. And because of the increased number of signs that you're requesting, that, I guess my concern is the, as that area's being developed, other restaurants, other establishments might see that as a precedent, and then, there's a lot of signage. So, I guess those are my comments and questions for now. I'd like to hear the other commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoie.
I do have questions and comments.
Good.
First of all, even though it's not our purview, I do agree it's signed. I agree with staff. Secondly, I wanted to ask staff a question, that the number-one thing that sticks out in my mind on your submittal to us is number one, and that is that we would be entering into a breach of contract with the master developer if this were granted. And I really have a problem with that. That's something that, I, I'm not going to be in favor of any type of petition that would allow us to be in a breach of contract between the village and the master developer.
Staff?
The planned development agreement, which is what we're talking about when we talk about that agreement, deals strictly with ground signs. We received clarification on the matter when we were reading the terms of the agreement. It seemed to point to signage in general, being something that they would need to strictly adhere to the sign code. However, upon second reading and counsel, it was determined that the ground signs were the only things that were included in the planned development agreement, so that any other signage would be taken out of that agreement, and then, it would carry its own process through the sign code permitting and varying process.
Has the master developer been consulted with on their opinion of the breach or a potential breach?
Yes, there was a meeting, a conference call, and it was discussed with the master planner, the, the company, and the, internally as well. There is a monument, there are two monument signs that were approved, if we want to segue into that. One of them is not to exceed, I believe, eight feet in height, and they're coming in at about six feet in height. It will be built by a different company or contractor, so that permit application has not been received. And there is another monument sign that also was approved through the PDA, which deals with multi-tenant aspects. There is a panel that, a portion that will be on the multi-tenant sign, ground sign that will say Raising Cane's. So, if we saw, if we look at the total number of signs that were initially provided to us, there were 13 signs, including menu boards, just a variety of different signage. So, as a planner, my only concern would be related to the size of these particular signs. They have not been investigated as far as permitting. They will have to go through the permit process, and the signs may or may not come in at a size greater than is allowed through the permitting process. And they also, from a planning perspective, may or may not compete with the other signage that is on the multi-tenant sign, as well as the fact that there is a second sign dedicated strictly to Raising Cane's. That is a monument sign as well.
Bruce Swanson. Yes, Bruce?
So, I think the important thing, just to be really clear about, is approving a variance would not be a breach of contract or be in conflict with the planned development agreement. And our report that we put out, it was distributed before we got that clarification, so I apologize. The report suggests that approving a variance would be a breach.
Yes, that's what I'm reading, so that's my...
But we have since learned and found out that it, that, as Nolini just explained, that is only for the monument signs. That portion of the agreement does not affect the wall signs, which is what we're discussing tonight.
I understand. I get it. So, with this, from a percentage, percentage perspective, what were allowed versus what were the petitioners requesting, how far out are we from, is it 100% or, you know, where are we as far as the request?
I would say 300%.
300% more than what we allow.
Just the ballpark. I haven't done the numbers or anything, but we, every business has allocated a particular area, square footage, for each wall sign. They're allowed a certain number of wall signs, and each sign has to have a certain limit to the square footage. So, they, they've reached the allocation on the two signs that they already have. So, you know, this would exceed fairly the, you know, allocation that they do have.
Did you, as part of your analysis, did you research back prior cases about the limitations and variation, other variations that were requested? Has there been any other variations denied over the, this level of, of overage on the signage?
I haven't seen in the time that I've been here sign applications that exceed even one. You know, the most we've had are two wall signs over and above the first one. Technically, if we go further into this, the driveway is considered, we're considering it already a corner lot, even though technically, it's not a corner lot. We're interpreting, in order to provide that second allocation for wall signs, we're considering the driveway, since it does have a frontage entrance from the parking lot. We're considering that, a frontage, so that the building would be considered a corner lot, building, which technically, it is not. So, that's as far as the, the applications that I've received, where some buildings have been interpreted to be corner lots, when they're really not.
And historically, there have been many, many sign variance requests that have come before this commission, up to the village board. Many of them have been approved. Some of them have been tweaked over time. I think what's a little unique about this is, besides the wall signs, is that you've got some other emblem, signage, artwork that qualifies as a sign that's being considered. So, it's a little bit different than other applications that have come through.
I can think of one Burger King that tried, was way over on signage on Cass Avenue. It's no longer there. It's, but it was denied. And you know what they did? They put up the biggest flag you've ever seen. Like, but I mean, there have been, there have been instances, many, over the years, where we are, we did hold our feet to the fire on our, on our signage ordinance. But we've also given a lot of variances, but not, not 300%.
And we have. And the other thing, too, is I'm thinking about how much effort has been put into the sign ordinance, ramping it up and, and tweaking it, getting it to where we need it to be. And, I mean, Joe spent a lot of time working on that sign ordinance, and, you know, it's something that I'd like to, you know, fall, fall on and say, hey, that we've decided on an ordinance, and this is what it is, with the exception of some variations within 20% or so. But this seems, this petitioner seems, this petition seems to be way far beyond, you know, what a variation request would normally be, in my mind.
But it's more in interpretation, they're asking more for relief from our interpretation, because if you take away the, interpret that as a sign, then all of a sudden, it's not such a big variance.
Understood. But when I'm falling back on to what the village attorney has told us, that's really not our purview to make a determination if it is or it isn't. Staff has made that determination, and they have said that it's a sign. And that's their recommendation to us, and we have to decide now that they've told us that it's a sign. That means to me that that's a variation of over 100%, which we've never granted before.
I would say, I would hesitate to say you've never granted it before, because there have been some significant sign variances in the past.
Yeah, that's why I was asking that question to staff. I can't think of one that was that far out. I've been on the commission, that's been that far out, but I, I also...
I'm not sure.
...agree that, that it does set precedence, too, that if this is something that is a sign, and, you know, so I really fall back on how much of a variation will be granted. But I do have a couple of questions for the petitioner. Is that, is that sign on the wall? Can you, I didn't get the, the full package in my package, but tell me about the orientation of that, those signs you're requesting in relation to the site. What side does that face?
The front is facing west 63rd.
But looking at that elevation, okay, so that, I can only assume that that's facing west?
The front entrance is facing south.
Okay, but does, I can't see the elevation as far as the, the, the way it's related to the site orientation. I can't read that. I don't have that plan in my packet.
Yeah. It doesn't say anything more than front elevation, but it does face 63rd, which is south for the property.
How much visibility on the side you're requesting with the dog, is that going to get from the road frontage?
The dog is mainly for the people, the customers already on the site.
Okay. Is it illuminated? I see some building lighting out there. Is there any kind of lighting to do with the signs you're requesting?
The dog does have an LED that shines directly down above it, but it's very limited visibility. The One Love is internally illuminated like a typical sign.
Okay. I just don't, I have trouble going that far beyond that it is a sign, and the ordinance says what it says, and going that far beyond, I'm not in favor.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions.
Mr. Van Buren.
This is quite unusual compared to what we normally get on a sign variance request. And I, I appreciate where you're coming from. You have an identity that you'd like to establish or keep. And you are so different from most of our petitioners in coming in regarding your signage, mainly is to identify them and then to direct them if it need to be, to get here or there. But this is, is very different, and I really, I don't know, I'll just see what other people have to say on it, but it, I, I'm very confused by it.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Is, is there a reason we don't have that, that picture of the signs in that in our packets? Because I, I can't see it to... Because I, I can't see it to, to make a judgment. And it's, and like the other commissioners have said, it's, it's a lot more than, and it's not like every sign is in every restaurant. It's, some signs are in some restaurants, some signs are, are not in restaurants. And other of the restaurants that, that he owns.
I would say that we're not some, we're over a vast majority have this type of signage.
This is your look?
Correct.
Right, okay. And all we, and we're just here to decide whether you have a variance or not, not whether they are signs or art. My, my concern is that all these other businesses that have come before us, we've said, you're allowed this, you're allowed that, you're allowed this, you're allowed that. And, and this, this footage and this percentage, and, and very strict. And then all of a sudden, you, okay, your signs are this, same, same qualifications in that. But now this is art, and it's going to be seen from the, the road. Just like, and we've told other businesses that you can't have this much and be, see it from the road. And again, I, I can't see the, I can't see your presentation because it's not in our packet.
Can I just back up? Did you, you've, you've done how many of these now for, for them?
I handle all of Raising Cane's variances, which are generally two or three a year. We typically do not have to do variances often, and we generally work with the cities beforehand to make sure that we have an agreement to design a lodge prior to us coming to a location.
So you haven't encountered this same situation before?
We do two to three variances a year. But generally, no, Cane's feels so strongly about their signage or artwork pieces that they, that's their lead with a lot of cities, is to check and make sure. Like, this, this Westmont project, I actually, I've had in my hands for over a year and a half. And we've started working on due diligence, figuring out what was allowed, what we needed. So we are very well-prepared, sometimes a year to three years before we actually start building a site.
But we, and you're well-prepared, but you didn't prepare us very well. We really didn't have much to go on tonight. And these are even with these elevations, that we have almost nothing to, to try and visualize what you're really requesting.
Yes, and I was told that, that there was changes to the elevations. However, I was only able to confirm because they, the city or the village did meet with the development on Monday, and we were told that there were supposedly changes to the elevations. We had no other elevations or notice of changes. And I confirmed with the developer that there was not going to be any changes affecting our elevations. And then I had to take our elevations that we had and confirm with the architect that we were, we did have the elevations. So I sent those over to Nalini this morning, and she said that it was too late to add to your package. So I apologize for the delay, but we, this was kind of rushed.
I have, I have, I have doubts about, about the additional, I don't want to call it signage. It's, it's different advertising, you want to call it on there. We'll see.
Thank you. Commissioner Sharp.
Hi, welcome.
First of all, I want to apologize that it has been kind of a bumpy process to get here, especially if you have been working on it for so long. And, you know, these things happen when you have new interpretations and, you know, new voices get added after a project starts. So I apologize that we are here. But when I, when you first started talking and showing us the elevations, and we started talking about art versus signage, it was kind of interesting how we would delineate that. This is before we were told not to delineate this. But I, I think, you know, it, just at the face value, I have a little bit of leniency because I feel like maybe it's, there's no typeface on some of these. It's artistic, you know, you could say that, you could say that it's art. And maybe that would have been a different route to go, would be to appeal. And maybe you can, if you, if this variance gets rejected, you know, maybe, I don't know what the process is to appeal an interpretation, but maybe that's something that's aside.
Let me see if this helps. So we actually define what a sign is, and it's a name, identification, description, illustration, display or device which is affixed to, painted or represented upon a building structure or land which directs attention to a product, place, activity, person, institution or business. So it's pretty broad. And then in the sign code itself, there are exemptions saying this doesn't qualify as a sign, and nowhere is artwork listed. So it is, I think, more than a reasonable interpretation to say that when you have an artwork that is part of your branding or your logos, that that is a sign. Any logo under that definition is a sign, and this is part of their national branding.
Right.
So if we could get over the fact whether this is a sign or not, it is, it's just unique, and you don't see it every day. So whether that warrants an exception, again, this is a new shopping center, one of the first tenants to come in on one of the outlots. So it's, you know, there's, it's, it's a nice new business for the village on one hand. On the other hand, they're, they're asking for more than what's allowed.
Yeah. I remember there was discussion when we were reviewing the Quincy, Cass and Quincy Development, the apartments, there was discussion about adding a mural to the west side of one of those buildings. I'm assuming that would not count as signage.
We'd have to discuss that because that would not be particularly
It's not directing people to
That was proposed more as public artwork, as opposed to directing someone or part of a national branding campaign for a business.
Right, and I think actually your testimony about the purpose of, that these additional items serve very much put them in the camp of signage. I mean, you're saying how these identify people that this is a Raising Cane's. So it's, I think by your own testimony, this should be considered signage. But, and I also agree with other commissioners, it's three hundred percent is quite substantial. And I, I haven't heard nor can think of myself a hardship of why this particular project should get a variance, especially a three hundred percent variance. So I guess my opinion is that unfortunately, I, it's the proposal.
Could I make a comment to that?
Please, sure.
We were encouraged by the village to ask for all of the items. So if it would be more palatable to break them down separately, we would certainly be willing to. It was just that during our initial review with the entirety of the sign package, we were told to go ahead and propose the max that we would like, and then we could work backwards.
Do you have a site plan? Did I, as part of this?
We aren't really here to negotiate, we're here to approve a given request or to disapprove of it.
Well, you do have the option of continuing a public hearing and also giving the applicant some feedback, what you think would be acceptable, if any variance would be acceptable. So for example, if you said that the two main Raising Cane's wall signs plus the One Love would be acceptable and/or one piece of artwork, but the other things are too much, you know, I think giving some feedback to them might be helpful. And then they'd have the ability to come back with maybe some revised plans, and you could evaluate how that looks.
We could see it.
So which side of the drive, is the drive-in?
The drive, the drive-through's on this side. This would be the front entry.
And that is the east side, is it not, going north? From Sixty-third Street, it would be going north
Yes, Sixty-third is down here.
Around the building to the west side for pickup.
So there's Sixty-third. And there's our front.
Yes. But the traffic would go up the east side of the building around, and the pickup would be on the west side of the building.
We have a access that's going to be in this general area, so they will mainly filter in from here, as there's no turn lane directly in front of our building.
Yeah, I, I think that just the way you described, even the, the picture of the dog, and it is illuminated at night by external lights, and the One Love logo, I mean, the, the channels, that letter is no question a sign. But I guess I would consider them all signs, and I don't, I'm going back to negotiating, can we approve something? But I don't see the hardship, I still don't see the hardship in, in any approval. But we, I'm open to hearing other commissioners' opinions.
Yes, Commissioner Lavoy.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. The other thing that I look at now that the site plan is up, is those sides located. That's what I was really getting at in my initial questioning, is location of the sign and the visibility of those signs. Once Lot 1A gets developed, there's not a whole lot of visibility there for the sign. And the risk of us approving something, that's far out. To me, there's no question, you know, I'm not even, I'm not even making a determination myself, really. I mean, it's, it's a sign because they have told us it's a sign. So for me, it's a variation of the three hundred percent. And I hope you understand that, that that's something that, doing anything less, I don't see the hardship either, because the sign will not be visible once Lot 1A is developed.
And, and that's why I said it's for the aesthetic of the drive-through customer, so that they get the culture of the inside of the building.
I understand, but that to me doesn't really represent a hardship.
It is.
So I'm having a, a big trouble with it just because of that. I don't have really good hardship argument here. And it's a, it's a variation of, that's far exceeds what I'm comfortable with. And, you know, I, I agree with Commissioner Van Buren that we're not here to, I, I think we're here to give you input if you want to come back or whatever we're going to do. But I think your petition, the way it sits now, is really not something that I could support because of, of the lack of detail, the lack of argument for the, the variation itself, the lack of hardship, and the amount of deviation. Well, for those reasons, I, I can't support it.
One thought I had is to scale back the signage and maybe return with more of the detail, and let us look at this again. Because I think, I think the project is, is a good project. And if it's, if we're talking about signage versus artwork, you know, there's a part of me that, that sees that as artwork, frankly, the heart, especially in the dog. But having said that, signage is what it is, it's been determined, which is fine. But maybe in a compromise, could we scale back the, the amount of signage? And, and see if the commission would consider that? And maybe have more detail, more, more plans that we can look at more closely.
Okay.
And the other thing too is, is that if you look at the Raising Cane's website, as far, your, your argument is branding, and you're, you're, this is your loc, part of your logo, part of your, your vision, and how you represent the company, it's not, that dog is not on the website at all. And I, I think there's a picture of a dog on the website, but there's no signage on any other building that you see. I don't see those signs. So that's off your website. So I'm just thinking that, it did say in your testimony that you've, you've created signs unique to Westmont?
The logo, yes, because there was certain specifications. Our standard sign is a thermo-formed, three-dimensional type cabinet.
Yes.
And it was considered not to be conforming to the current code. So we designed it with individual channel letters that would be better suited to the code.
So it sounds like your options procedurally would be that this commission would continue the public hearing until the September meeting, which would be the second Wednesday in September. And you can present revised plans, presumably still needing a variance, otherwise you wouldn't have to be in front of this body. Or you can take the, ask for a vote as presented and go to the village board and see what they decide.
I will have to ask my customer, but I would say at this time, we really need to postpone to September and bring back a new package that would be a reduction, since we don't want to piecemeal anything, that would reduce what we have. And we can also bring photos of kind of visualization of what's around Cane's and the site itself, if that would be okay.
Well, that's, that's excellent, because, you know, I think you were going to get a thumbs down tonight based on, I don't believe that you showed, demonstrated a hardship, for starters, and that, and essentially tripled the number of allowed signs, and
And something else that's
No doubt that this is branding, whatever, whatever it's art or logo or whatever. So go ahead, John.
And I know Bruce wants to make a comment too. But something else that's been helpful that other applicants have done is total all the combined square footage of the proposed signage versus the combined square footage that's allowed. And we've had cases where applicants have said, despite the fact we're exceeding the number of signs by one or two, we're under the total allowable square footage. And that's a factor to consider. Here, I don't know that staff ever had the benefit of receiving that analysis from you. Square footage may have been shown for the signs, I'm not sure, but I don't think it was ever totaled up by you, and that was ever proffered as a justification.
Yeah, we had very little communication as far as the variance requirements and what would be shown. And we actually had to reduce down our variance narrative. So I, like I said, there, there was a meeting on Monday, there's been some conflict of what we needed and when, as far as from Cane's to the developer. And so we'll work with the village to make sure that everything is
As you go forward now, knowing that, of what our concerns are.
Yes.
Work with Nalini and Bruce.
We'll make sure to present everything to address your concerns next time.
Well, we certainly want you to succeed, and, and we want to do what we can to, to assist with that.
I just want, I just wanted to add, I, I do, I do want to just say that you can spend another month doing this, you may still get a negative recommendation from this body, just because we're not, it's not a negotiation where we come at three hundred percent, and then we say that's a little bit too much, let's come back at one hundred, like two hundred percent. I think one of the main pieces of homework is identifying your hardship, and then comparing, like has been mentioned, ways where you do satisfy the intent of our code. And, and we can consider that as its own thing. But just because we come one month with three hundred percent, and now we're down the next month, that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a real justification and purpose behind the variance.
Understood.
Okay, well, then the chair would entertain a motion to continue next month.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, second by Commissioner Bartel. Discussion, comments?
Just clarified that the, this is a public hearing that was advertised in the newspaper, and notice was given to surrounding property owners. Because the public hearing is being continued until the September Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there will not be any new publication or notice to surrounding property owners. There will simply be an agenda posted with this continued item.
Staff?
No comments.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
Yes, roll call.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Okay, so Ms. Holmes? Get a chance to get with your people and with these people, and come back and make us all happy next month. We'll move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item. PG 19018, a request from the Community Development Department regarding the following. A zoning ordinance text amendment A zoning ordinance text amendment to the Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning code, Article 13, Section 13, Decimal 09, special uses, to allow special uses to run with the land for the property and use for which it was granted. So, Mr.? Bruce, would you carry the ball from here?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is a recommendation from staff in the Community Development Department. It basically arises from the situation we had earlier tonight with the first agenda item in Oxford Bank. And that's a situation where one bank received a special use permit many years ago and then a new bank purchased the building and moved into the building. The ordinances, as they're currently written, required the new bank to go through the process to get a special use permit. Oxford Bank, 18 or 19 years ago, was unaware of that or was not informed of that. And we didn't catch it until recently when I believe we had a request for a zoning verification letter. And we realized that the new bank, Oxford, never got that special use permit. My own experience in other communities is that when a special use permit is granted for, in this instance, a drive-through facility, if LaSalle Bank moves out and Oxford Bank moves in, that special use permit for the drive-through facility, and the term we use is, it runs with the land. So it doesn't matter the name of the bank in the building. Their ability and their right to have a drive-through facility continues. There are two notable time limits that I want to explain because they're also related here. One has to do with how much time a business is allowed after they first receive a special use permit. And what we're recommending is that they have, I think it's a year. So if you vote in June to give a new business a special use permit, that gives them a year to become operational. And then the other time limit would be if a bank moves into, or any special use, but I'm just using banks as an example. If a bank moves into a building and has a drive-through facility and they're there for eight or 12 years and then they go out of business and that building sits empty for a period of time, eventually then that special use would expire. And even a bank wanting to move into that building would have to go through the process to get a special use permit. And then the time period we're recommending for that is a year. But if a bank is in a building and they sell it to a new bank and that new bank moves in in three or six or nine months, they wouldn't have to go through the process. So that's what we're recommending in full disclosure. Or I guess to present maybe an argument against what we're recommending. I've talked to a couple of people who have said the reason Westmont's rules say even a new bank going into a building where a bank used to be, the reason we require a special use permit is just to give the village, you and the board that level of review for new businesses coming into the community. So if people want to maintain that oversight and involvement as new businesses come in, you could keep the rules as they're written. But our recommendation is saying that if one special use moves into a building where a similar special use has already been allowed, the new one would not need to reapply.
Who do you trust to tell you when someone moved out and someone moved in?
It's an excellent question and the burden would be on staff to monitor. And typically with our code enforcement officers or the clerk's office with business licensing, within some degree of certainty, usually weeks, give or take, we know when a business went out of business. So let's say Oxford Bank goes out of business, staff would be responsible for, would be responsible for determining when a year passes such that the special use would expire. But having done this in other communities, we're generally pretty aware of when businesses close and go out of business and would be able to start the clock with some degree of certainty.
And I think the burden would also fall on the applicant who comes in at the 12-month mark if there's a question to say, well, we think the other business closed 13 months ago, so you need a special use permit. If they think otherwise, then the burden would be on them to provide proof.
If people are comfortable, then it would just be a text amendment. And I think we would ask the village attorney to put it in final ordinance language and make it clear. And then that would go to the village board if there's a recommendation here.
I personally am good with it.
Yeah, I don't think this is going to take a lot of debate. Let's go around. Craig?
Can I support that?
Tom?
I have a question.
Sure.
I need to get more understanding of how, if a new bank occupies an old bank, is it true that there is, as part of a new business license, there is a zoning review attached to every new business license? So there's already some level of zoning review into every business license. So what if the new bank wanted to add a new lane, a new drive-in lane? So it's the same use, but it's a site change. Are they before us for a site plan in that case? Okay.
Yep.
I'm comfortable with it, since there's already review.
For example, Oxford has five lanes, only two are being used. The third one is the, there are three that are not being used now, they don't have anything in them. Well, now as that changes back and forth between, the lanes are already there, but they're inactive. I mean, you can get real splitting hairs on this.
Well, things change. There, people are doing banking over their phone. So the drive-ins, drive-through lanes are...
Yeah, they're minimizing.
But any site improvement needs site plan approval in a business district. This really started in 2010 when there was no restrictions on special uses. They ran with the land and they would run with the land forever. So if there was a use approved in the 1980s and it went out of business after five years, and now we're in 2019, someone could purchase the land and say, well, there was a, you know, a special use for an amusement, an arcade use, that the village may not really want there anymore. Or things may have changed in the character of the neighborhood, so it would not be appropriate. So rules were put in place in 2010 to state that special uses don't run with the land. They are unique to the applicant. And if that use ceases or there's a change in ownership, there'd have to be a new special use. I think staff is saying maybe that went a little bit too far and they should run with the land unless there's this gap in operations of 12 months. And if there's that gap, then the special use terminates so that 20 years later, we don't have an approval that's still valid for that property. And that makes sense. Can I ask a question? As far as the commencement of construction, is, did you, I forget from the staff report. Are you, is that language okay? Do you want that clarified or do you want that removed as far as exercising the special use for it to be valid?
I think there should be some language in there that says, once granted, the recipient needs to show that they're moving forward. Now whether, and this is where we get into the minutia of the day-to-day administration, whether that's the issuance of a building permit or whether that's evidence that they're under construction or whether that's an occupancy permit. I mean, those are things that maybe we could discuss or if you have a suggestion. But I think there should be something in there so that it's clear that if we grant that special use permit, some sort of clock is ticking and they need to show forward progress or else they lose that entitlement.
It would seem an occupancy permit might be the best trigger because that shows they are able to open up for business. But not have it so restrictive where they're coming back and asking for extensions.
Right.
I think one year for an occupancy from a, from a planning, that's a short amount of time.
Yes.
So you may want to make it longer if that's the terminus.
We usually have considered exercising a variance, meaning starting construction. And so there's a 12-month period. But starting, they could start construction, put a foundation and then stop. And it could sit there for 10 years and argue that the special use is valid still because they at least took some action to start. I think an occupancy permit's a better trigger as long as there's a reasonable time period.
Good point. Chris?
Another point too is, is that especially with banks, you don't necessarily have one that moves out vacant and then another bank comes in. What you have is you have an acquisition. And that acquisition happens fairly quickly. And what we don't want to have is that a big bank sucks up a little bank and now they can't operate because of our village ordinances. So I don't want to have that condition exist. So it's something that we need to consider, that acquisitions of banks happen all the time. Especially over the past 10 years. I mean, it's something that, I don't want to have a larger bank come in and not be able to operate because of our work structure. So if you would consider that, I don't know, I'm trying to process that to see if it would.
This solves that problem.
It solves that problem.
Yes.
Because I read it like five times and I still...
I think what they're saying is if the bank ceases operations and just stops operating as a bank for a continuous period of 12 months, then the special use terminates. But if it's simply just a change of ownership through an acquisition or sale or whatever, that special use would continue. Staff doesn't have to be burdened with any approvals.
Got it. Beautiful. Thank you for the clarification.
Well, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, well, they're, just recently, the townhouse development on Cass Avenue, just north of Chicago Avenue on the west side of the street, we approved that years ago.
10 years ago.
And they never came back?
Yes, they didn't. They came back repeatedly to the village board for an extension of their, of the, that time period to exercise their variance.
Oh, okay.
And a couple of times they came back late and the approval was granted retroactively to say, okay, that 12-month period's extended for another year or two because they were dealing with financing and engineering and whatnot. But they did always come back to the village board and many other applicants have also when they have not timely exercised their variance.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because we thought if we didn't see them, they didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
So did you need more than a consensus on this?
Do you need to vote?
Do you need to vote on this?
Either recommend approval or not, and then it goes to the board for their consideration.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, and I hear none, the chair will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Mr. Lavoy and Commissioner Thomas, second.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael?
Yes. Okay, sir, you have our approval. And you can, you'll be notified by staff when it's time for you to go before the board with this. Next item. PZ C 19019, a request from the Community Development Department regarding the following. A zoning ordinance text amendments to the Village of Westmont Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, including 1, Article 14, definitions, and 2, Article 7, Section 7, Decimal 03, permitted and special uses in business districts to create definitions and regulations for microbreweries, micro-distilleries, similar alcohol-related businesses that manufacture and sell products for consumption on the premises and for small-scale distribution. Malini?
Hi, my name is Malini, planner with the Village of Westmont. I thought I would give a presentation of this text amendment because we would like a review of the actual text and to see whether you will agree with what is said or we can use this a little bit as an exercise and get a little more input rather than transferring it back to staff to finalize. It's a proposed draft. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So first, we started with the definitions. The current code has a definition that was very limiting. It really talks about microbreweries, beer, focusing on beer. And our definition that we're proposing focuses on the aspect of being homemade in a way, produced locally, produced on the premises, rather than, you know, whether it's wine or beer or any other type of alcoholic beverage. So our definition is here, for craft alcoholic beverages, any fermented or distilled specialty beverage for sale or consumption on the premises where it is being produced that contains ethyl alcohol or some chemical component of it, so we know exactly what it is, ethanol, CH3CH2OH, as an intoxicating agent and that is fit for internal consumption, includes beverages such as craft beer, wine, or alcoholic spirits with any alcohol content by volume. So we're not focusing on whether it has a lot of alcohol, a little bit of alcohol. A lot of communities in the area will focus on that aspect, but it's very hard to, you know, with code enforcement and all that, it's very hard to do. So we are trying to balance regulating, allowing with also compliance and inspections and all of that. So keep in mind that kind of, the elements that go into this. Another definition that we are modifying, we're removing the microbreweries versus brew pub dichotomy. Brew pubs focus on restaurants, sit-down. And then microbreweries are more about production. And we're trying to put them together and distinguish between different districts. So we have B1, B2, C1, and M. And depending on the location and the district, we would regulate the size of the seating area versus the production capability, the loading and that type of thing, and the traffic and outdoor seating. So our definition encompasses microbreweries and micro-distilleries, again, to allow for going beyond just beer. We do have, we receive input into this indicating that wines are, I don't know, growing in popularity as well in this aspect. So a business that specializes in the production and sale of craft alcoholic beverages, including beer, wine, or alcoholic spirits, and which may offer indoor or outdoor areas for onsite consumption of the craft alcoholic products produced, where all such preparation, processing, or packaging is completely enclosed and conducted on the premises and there are no outside impacts or outside storage. Includes small-scale distribution, which will be defined next. Excludes bottling and distribution plants and breweries or distilleries that purchase products from outside vendors for distribution or sale on or off-site. So we're trying to be comprehensive, defining everything. And so that's what I'd like you to think about a little bit as well. See if we're accomplishing our goal. Small-scale distribution is defined as limited to one truckload or 22 pallets, which is an industry standard in terms of truck loading. And each pallet is limited to 2,200 pounds per day. Be allowed areas would be your B1 districts, B2 districts, C1, and M. Office and research institutional will not be allowing these uses. B1 district is allowed with a special use. B1 permit is required, which means that it must obtain village board approval. If we have one distillery, a microbrewery, and, you know, we don't want another one, that's a way that you can regulate those. So it would go beyond just the standards of a special use. It would have to receive approval from the board. Special conditions would be no appreciable traffic congestion, no parking requirements for the B1 district. A lot of walkability, parking spaces, car pooling, you know, just the culture downtown is a little different. Not within 1,000 feet of a school. Offsite distribution is limited to one truckload per day with a loading area or bay that is clearly marked. Interior seating area for consumption on the premises is limited to 25 percent of the total square footage of the building. Outdoor seating area is to be calculated at no more than 50 percent of the allowable interior seating area. So trying to provide for a way to calculate outdoor seating by basing it off of the indoor. That's an idea. B2 districts. Microbreweries would be allowed with a special use. None of them allow by right uses. They all require village board approval. Special conditions in the B2 districts would be no appreciable traffic congestion, not within 100 feet of a residence district, not within 500 feet of a school, parking requirements of 1.5 parking stalls per 100 square feet. Off premise, offsite distribution is limited to one truckload per day as well with a loading area or bay. Interior seating area for consumption on the premises limited 25 percent. Outdoor seating area is to be calculated... Outdoor seating area is to be calculated no more than fifty percent. It's very similar to the B1 district with the difference of having parking requirements and no B1 permit. C1 commercial district, allowed as a special use, village board approval required. Special conditions, again, traffic congestion will have to be limited, not within five hundred feet of a residence district. So we start to get further away from residential, the properties are larger, not within a thousand feet of a school. Parking requirement, again, is one point five stalls per a hundred square feet. Offsite distribution limited to three truckloads. You're starting to increase distribution, but then you're reducing the, or you will be starting to reduce the seating area. Interior seating area for consumption on the premises limited to twenty-five percent. Outdoor seating area calculated no more than fifty percent. It's very similar to B2 with a slight difference. M manufacturing districts, allowable with a special use, village board approval required. Special conditions, no appreciable traffic, not within five hundred feet of a residence. In this particular case, the categories already existing in manufacturing districts include not within a certain number of feet near, you know, private, public, institutional uses, parks, and so on. Again, this one also has compliance with all federal, state, regional, local laws. Not that the other ones do not, but as a special condition of approval for the special use, this will be looked at a little more closely. Parking requirements of one parking stall per a hundred square feet. Offsite distribution limited to ten truckloads. This is where a little guides would be helpful. Interior seating area for consumption on the premises is limited to twenty-five percent. And the outdoor seating area to be calculated at no more than twenty-five percent. So we're reducing the outdoor seating for manufacturing districts while increasing the allowable offsite distribution of their products. So they would be producing more and selling this onsite. So that's the difference. There's a little, you know, there's just differences in grade and scale. Any questions?
Lily, can you go back to the setback requirements for residential?
Okay, for which?
Downtown district, been the business district.
Or B1?
Yeah. See, I, if you put a thousand feet of a school, you have a school close to downtown. So it's something that could, even though that, I know that's one of those, those, you know, no-no's to be within a school, within a certain footage, and that exists almost everywhere in every community, but a thousand feet prohibits part of our downtown from ever having one.
Well, it's five hundred, is it not?
It's five hundred is what's recommended, but if I could chime in on that, because it's a great question. The State Liquor Control Act says.
Over there too.
Liquor stores, bars, any place where alcohol is sold for either off premises consumption or on premises consumption has to be a hundred feet from a school. And I think it says church also. I don't think that we have the authority to vary that state regulation. I'm not even sure if, as a home rural community, which the Village of Westmont is not, whether we could have a larger setback.
Those are, I was going there too, but.
It's possible we could. But in the downtown in particular, it's proven to be an issue in the past, and maybe someone has to come in for variance for that. But I think it's something we need to look at.
That brings to mind an aspect that we're not talking about, which would be hours of operation as well, you know.
That's governed by the liquor ordinance. There's a whole ordinance that governs liquor sales in the village, and that's all done by the liquor commissioner and by ordinance.
Chairman? So just backing up a step, if I understand correctly, the point you were making is the state sets a one hundred foot limit from schools and possibly churches, and we would not be able to create something more restrictive.
You may be able to, I've just.
Something we need to look into.
Look into, but to Mr. Lavoy's point, in the downtown, that would basically prohibit a microbrewery.
Period.
Yeah.
So wasting our time if we don't do something about that language.
Yes, very good. So I am making a note of it here that, because it's a part, actually, I think I could do it right here. Presentation mode, so we are saying one hundred?
I would emulate precisely what the state code has, that's what I would do, but.
We are allowed to be, we're not allowed to be more restrictive.
More restrictive. No, usually you can be more restrictive than a state statute. In the context of liquor, I think that may be true, but I'd have to read the act to make sure. Because there's a powerful lobby and they may have built some language in there that, you know, if you create a larger distance separation, people are going to scream and holler. In either event, I know that our Code of Ordinances currently mandates a hundred foot for any liquor establishment, distance separation in any zoning district from a school. So we'd be creating more restrictive regulations just for microbreweries. I don't know if there's a justification to be more restrictive for microbreweries compared to restaurants.
Right.
Or liquor stores.
And we automatically would adopt not conforming uses then because of the existing bars downtown.
Well, this one would not impact bars downtown, it would only impact microbreweries, if the distance separation.
We have one microbrewery downtown just recently opened, and we have one microbrewery in a manufacturing district around Williams and Sixty-first. Are there any others that you're aware of?
I believe those are the only two.
Correct.
As far as I know.
And then the other thing too, I would say too, is you go through the requirements in each district, and I've seen this like down in Lamont, for example, that I think their code in Lamont is something similar to what you're proposing, where it's like less restrictive, like when you go to a manufacturing district. So what's happening now is that these microbreweries are propping up in industrial parks.
Yeah, all over.
Because it's less restrictive, and, you know, that's something that we need to consider as well because they all of a sudden get real popular in an area where you wouldn't even think that zoning would allow it. But because of the changes in ordinance requirements, the businesses have migrated towards that, so I wouldn't want to see that either. But that's something that I, it's hard to really control. And then again, the other thing too, my other comment would be, I wouldn't get so definitive on the definitions. I would pull out the chemicals stuff because I could add an OH without a problem, and all of a sudden I don't meet your order, or I am excluded from your ordinance. So I would just leave it broad about any alcohol, period, and don't have to define what alcohol really is.
Malini, you obviously, you did research on this about other communities because this is a phenomenon that's happening all over.
Right.
Is this pretty, did you find that the distances were from schools and so on were written in on the ones that you looked into?
Not as much. I think a lot of these numbers I actually pulled from our existing code for some of the, for some of the, or for some of the districts.
Okay.
We do have a microbrewery allowance, but it's just not allowed in manufacturing districts. The reason we are putting together this text amendment is to allow them in manufacturing districts because they are so popular. The square footage, you know, price per square footage is.
And apparently our liquor commission doesn't have that much guidance on such things as outdoor and so on, so.
Right.
Well, they do, I mean, normally these, under current regulations, food has to be served in conjunction with any alcohol sales for onsite consumption. I think the exception was made for a class of liquor license if you're in an M district because they don't serve food at that one location. Otherwise, there has to be food, and if there's outside, any outdoor seating area, they have to present a floor plan to the liquor commissioner, he has to approve it, and he's allowed to, as part of the liquor license, impose any conditions on outdoor eating, drinking areas that he feels are reasonable.
Okay, so then my question is, are we being redundant, or are we getting into an area that's not within our, actually our purview?
By mentioning outdoor areas?
Well, and this whole concept, because.
Well, no, I think it's, staff is absolutely right that right now, microbreweries are not permitted, what, just in the B2?
They're only allowed, I think, in B2, and B1, through the B1 licensing, the permitting. And they're not allowed in M or C districts. I don't believe they're allowed in C1 districts either.
So I think they wanted to clarify the zoning ordinance and have better definitions and specify in what districts it can be allowed.
Mr. Chairman? If I could just chime in and give a little bit of background of, or more background about why we're discussing this tonight. There's a craft brewery, a microbrewery in the industrial park down on Zigmet. And it started as a production facility, and it got a liquor license to produce beer. And that makes sense, that's what the M district is for, it's where you produce things. Then they got an amendment, I believe, and village attorney Zemina, correct me if I have the history wrong, they got an amendment to their liquor license so that they could provide people with samples of what they were producing onsite. And then a little while later, they got another amendment to their liquor license to have some seating for the samples that they were providing. And the business was successful and it slowly grew, and all of that was done under the purview of a liquor license with no review or input by this group. So now there's an existing business, I believe it's a thriving business in the industrial park that wants to expand even more by providing outdoor seating. And that request came in about six months ago after I started with the village. And it was at that point that I said we should probably have some zoning rules that make a brew pub in a manufacturing district allowable. And my advice to the liquor commissioner, Tom Mulhern, was let's not grant any more amendments to their liquor license to let them grow as we've done in the past. But instead, let's come up with some zoning rules that make sense and then have them apply for a zoning permit if they want to expand. And my own belief is what they've got today has been allowed through the liquor license process. I believe they should be allowed to have what they have, and I'm not suggesting that any of that go away. But they want to expand even more, and my recommendation was that they shouldn't be allowed to expand anymore unless they go through some process here where you're involved and review it, and we look at things like traffic and congestion and parking and distances from residential areas and churches and stuff like that. So that's what's driving this. And then the last thing I'll say is that's what's got us here to being here tonight. Once you and then the board adopt some rules for these kinds of businesses, this particular business has made it very clear that they're just kind of waiting in the wings so that as soon as we adopt rules, they're going to come in and apply for, we're recommending a special use permit so that they can expand their operations and provide outdoor seating. So I only tell you that so that you're very aware that whatever we adopt, be prepared for a month or two later, an existing business to come in and say, hey, we want a special use permit, and we want it so we can expand our operations and have outdoor seating.
Okay, now, you talk about samples, samples that are normally not paid for.
Well, yeah, it went beyond just samples.
So obviously, they're selling.
For sale.
They're selling single drinks.
Honestly, I don't know. Are they? Okay. And that's all through the liquor license, and that's what they've been allowed to do. So we're just trying to create some zoning rules, sort of after the fact, to say what makes sense. And I don't want us to focus just on that business and that location. We need to come up with rules that make sense anywhere in the community, which is why I think Malini's done such a great job. She said, well, as long as we're talking about these kinds of businesses, microbreweries, let's just come up with rules for the entire community that make sense, the B1 district, the B2 district, et cetera.
One of the things that I would like to develop further with this would be the square footage allotments or allocations for each of these uses in different districts. Some communities talk about minimum of ten thousand square feet are required. One of the issues with the M district use that we have, that we've talked about right now, is that they started out in production, they manufacture, you know, a product, and that's what their application was about, they were going to produce and be a craft brewery. And then they started expanding slowly to different things. But their space requirements were not met from the beginning. That's a business side issue that I don't think that, you know, that we can solve or should solve perhaps. You know, that's another issue. So what I'd like to do when we look at this is what is, what should be, we be providing the, you know, beer craft community in terms of being able to offer certain sites that are suitable for this type of use. And then we're going to have anomalies that can either apply for variances and that type of thing. But I wouldn't want to create rules for existing businesses when these spaces that are being occupied may or may not be suitable for the use that they're proposing. And if they do have expansion plans, perhaps they need to work with chambers and just, you know, realtors and so on. So that's my personal opinion as a planner. But, so if we can come up with certain square footage requirements that, you know, that's something that we'd like to research, is what inventory do we have in terms of buildings, square footages, setbacks, depths, you know, parking and all of that? And what does the industry require going forward?
I have a lot of questions, actually. What is, I don't know, I don't know where to start. They're not complicated questions, I just need to know more. If a company the size of, say Goose Island, wanted to come into Westmont, they're most, I mean, they distribute tons, right? They still have tasting facilities and restaurants, so. If a company wants to come in that's that large, are they outside of any of these definitions? There's another definition that's more production without any allowance in the zoning code to tasting or seating or anything like that? Or is that most production that's allowed in Westmont, one truckload a day?
This particular text amendment deals specifically with craft alcohol, which is defined as something produced on the premises. So if you have a company that may produce, it's not limited, or it doesn't specify how large or how much or where it comes from, it's basically onsite. So if we have a hundred thousand square foot, you know, warehouse producing a huge amount of craft alcohol and selling it on the premises or in the local community, then that's what we're talking about. If you want it limited in terms of scope and size and so on, then we can start introducing those limitations. A Goose Island coming here, to me, would be a franchise or some kind of chain or, you know, outside bottling distribution.
So.
Although they started as a craft brewery.
I'm thinking more like distribution facilities, that they're making tons of this and.
So Goose Island has a location on Goose Island that is their primary brewing and distribution facility. It's not a bar, it's not a restaurant, it's just where they make the beer, the trucks come in, they bottle it, they ship it out. That would be a traditional M manufacturing use. Regardless of the fact that it's alcohol, they would need all sorts of approvals from the village and from the state for a distributor's license, et cetera. But what their sole purpose is, is manufacturing a product and distributing a product. That's different than what Malini's talking about and Bruce are talking about, which is a microbrewery where they're brewing it onsite for the primary purpose of onsite consumption. While there may be some limited distribution, that's where I think staff is trying to say no more than X number of trucks. So when you go to Goose Island on Clyborn Avenue, that's a restaurant, and they brew onsite, but they don't do much in the way of any actual distribution from that location. I think that's what staff has in mind.
And in terms of our definitions, it is, there is a sentence here, excludes bottling and distribution plants. And breweries or distilleries that purchase products from outside vendors. So you wouldn't be allowed, as it was a particular community brewery, to purchase Goose Island product and sell it onsite, that would not be allowed.
But what if it's like this, the new microbrewery that's downtown sells, I believe, things from other vendors in the town?
They're not allowed. You mean.
Is there a reason, like, what is the thought behind, here's a microbrewery, but you're not allowed to sell coffee from our other local coffee shop? I mean, I want to make sure that we're not putting unnecessary restriction.
Aren't they selling coffee at this one in the morning? They are.
They are, they're coffee, I'm not talking like that's, I'm not trying to. They are. They're coffee. I'm not talking like that's, I'm not trying to out somebody. Because that's their own coffee.
This particular business is, has received a B1 permit and they were vetted in terms of a process. A B1 permit is a little more lenient in terms of, you know, business plan. And that would be one thing that I would say about that one. I'm not sure. They also received a special use permit. If they're a restaurant, they could be, you know, regulated as a restaurant through the, by...
A bar sells only other vendors' products. And a micro...
Bruce, go ahead.
So, two comments. I don't know if the prohibition against selling other people's products is a liquor license issue or not. But for the zoning discussion, Nalini and I actually discussed this and we had a healthy professional disagreement. I wasn't comfortable including the language that would prohibit a microbrewery from being able to sell another microbrewery's beer. Nalini felt that we should limit it to only their own beer brewed onsite. So even amongst us, there was a little difference of opinion. And again, this is where we need direction from you. I think Nalini's argument is a good one. A microbrewery should just be that business's product and nothing else.
But why? And why is it the zoning, why is it the prerogative of the zoning code?
Here, one reason is, the village doesn't really like taverns. And they never give any more tavern licenses, which is just for a bar that sells beer or wine or liquor, but doesn't have food. They're not a restaurant. I think an exception was made for the one downtown. I think they did in fact get a tavern license because they don't provide food. But they are making their beer onsite, so as part of the liquor license process, they said, well, fine, to prevent you from being a tavern and selling Budweiser and everything else, if you want to be a distinctive, make your own beer place in Westmont, then that's all you're allowed to sell here. And I know from personal experience, microbreweries only sell their own product with very limited exceptions. And there are times when a guest, they'll have a, because a lot of these brewers are friends with other brewers, they'll have a guest beer of the month. And they'll allow, Goose Island will allow Revolution Ale to have a tap at their place. And there might be some cross-marketing.
What if it's not even alcohol? What if it's not a competing product? It's just another aside product, an accessory product like donuts or...
I was going to ask the same question. The use of the word product, if you mean alcohol, then I think should specify alcohol and not product.
Okay. Alcoholic products. I will look through this and make sure of that. In terms of the other breweries that may be producing a similar product and, you know, these things would be like cross-marketing. You know, are they selling the other businesses' products or are they allowing them to market and promote and do some kind of shared marketing?
And maybe it's where the revenue goes.
It all depends on how you look at it. And another thing we could add is something like locally sold, maybe not specifically on the premises, but maybe within, you know, the community or whatever way we want to word it, that they're all cooperating and creating this culture, which I think should be encouraged. I mean, I think it's a good idea. So if we want to add language to that effect, I think that would be.
And then, how do bars, taverns fit into this? You said that the village doesn't like taverns, but I like taverns.
But they're just retail outlets.
There's a certain quantity in the village of licenses that exist currently for taverns, right?
So that's how it's regulated.
So we're not increasing the number of licenses we're giving out. But it is, it is a, it is a use that is allowed in the village. You just have to get your turn for the license. Is that essentially?
Your license, yes. And I don't know if that same dislike for taverns still exists, but I know historically it has.
And those are not impacted at all by these definitions?
Correct.
Correct.
So perhaps I could add, on the premises or within the community? See, that becomes a little vague and then we'll define community.
And can microbreweries serve food? They can serve food.
The prior definition had brew pubs as restaurant style. It didn't really define that. And I believe that it allowed for, or it required 50% of sales to be food-related, if I remember. So that's something that has been stripped off of this, but could be added back in.
It just seems funny to me that the microbrewery wouldn't need to sell food. But a tavern doesn't need to sell food, but we're keeping these two things separate.
One of the reasons that could be is because the M district user was allowed, I believe, up to 48 ounces of sampling, which limited the amount of on-premise consumption versus a restaurant where it's unlimited. And you would want to require food sales.
There was a, again, going back to the tavern thing, there was a historic reason where Village wanted any liquor establishment that had onsite consumption to have food sales. And they wanted food sales to be the primary component of the business with alcohol being an amenity. That thinking may have changed over time. And with a brew pub like this, a microbrewery, you ask a valid question. Are they required to have at least some aspect of food sales as part of their business? You know, I don't have a thought one way or the other.
One of the difficulties with that is that the M user right now has a food truck that comes in in order to provide for that additional, people do want food sales to be available, even if it's not a requirement.
Not inside the facility, in the street outside.
Exactly. They're not equipped as a restaurant. And that goes back to the requirements for these businesses that the business plan has to include all of these elements ahead of time so we can find a suitable location approved for zoning.
So a question and then a response to your comment. The question is, we should, it would help Steph if we got some direction about the food issue. Maybe a simple solution, although it may be inadequate, is just saying that microbreweries, as we're defining them here, may sell food. It leaves it as an option, but it doesn't require it. That's just a thought. But then Commissioner Sharp, to your question about why are we seeming to come up with this weird distinction between taverns and microbreweries? It has everything to do with, microbreweries start as production facilities, sort of a manufacturing thing, and then morph and grow into this thing where they basically become restaurants. So a manufacturing facility, you've got one or two workers in a warehouse, parking isn't an issue, things like that. Well, when they start having a big room with seats and they're selling individual drinks and they get popular, well, suddenly you've got 30 cars there. And the parking especially becomes an issue. Whereas taverns start as just a place where they're selling drinks and they don't have this idea that they're a production facility. So that's where that distinction comes from. I don't know if that helps.
Speaking of...
But you wouldn't open up a microbrewery downtown without any seating or serving people. You wouldn't use just, you wouldn't use a downtown location.
You mean without food?
Just manufacturing, without food or without tasting. So in my opinion, the microbrewery starts out with that same intent to sell product as a tavern does.
That may be. And if that's the case, then this one in the M district kind of snuck in because maybe all along that was their intent. But how they presented themselves to the villages, we're a production facility. We just want to produce a product.
But, and we want to have a tasting room. And that is common also, to have a small tasting room. Now, remember, that's an owner who was finding their way, first time in the business. It changed over time. And now there's a brand-new owner who's got bigger plans for it. So it's a bit of, been a challenge for Steph.
They have absolutely no parking.
And there's no parking. And that's the biggest problem.
It's a mess over there. But they said they're popular.
Well, fortunately, it's generally late afternoon, evening when the other areas are cleared out after five o'clock and the people are parking on the street down there, so it's not quite as bad as...
I think if they're trying to open up downtown in one of the B districts, it's because they're wanting foot traffic and retail sales. Otherwise, they'd go somewhere else where it's cheaper to manufacture, right? Are we saying we really, would we ever approve just a purely manufacturing facility downtown?
I think the...
And if not, then we need to assume that they're going to be doing retail sales. And then back to what's the difference between that?
To go back to that distinction between taverns and brew pubs and manufacturing would be also looking at the, from a zoning perspective, the size, the square footage of the seating area versus a production area. Taverns don't need production areas. They need storage, refrigerators, you know, that kind of thing. And the seating areas are larger. So that's another requirement in terms of retail amenities versus the brew pub or microbrewery. And if you feel we need to go back to slicing the microbrewery versus brew pub definition and separating them out and going back to the brew pub as restaurant versus microbrewery as production and make that distinction clear again, we could do that as well.
Might not be a bad idea. Because I kind of agree with you that I think it's the intention that there must be onsite consumption. Certainly, you'd think in every business district, whether it's downtown or B2 or C1, that this would only be allowed if there's onsite consumption.
Right.
If it has a tavern component to it or typically with a restaurant component to it. Whereas opposed to if it's just manufacturing and distributing, that's a little different.
To your point about the food also, I think we should include, we may have some onsite consumption of food. I just think, I think you're right. I think that's part of the draw.
Well, in fact, Scallywax's presentation here mentioned cheese blocks, pairing different cheeses with beers. And that's not food as such, but...
What?
Cheese blocks are totally...
Yeah, I listened to all...
We're not going to have a...
Well, not like sandwiches.
Kitchen to kitchen, preparing food.
I think the kind of denominator about what everyone is saying is, we don't want to be overregulated. I think there's got to be flexibility built in. And you know what? When I go into a microbrewery and I know the microbrewery of Lamont, for example, and I want to have their beer at Westmont, well, why shouldn't we? You know, why doesn't the microbrewery arena out there share everything? So everybody, our beer that's manufactured here may be really loved in Glen Elwood. And why wouldn't you let them do that?
Well, it can be. In any pub, restaurant, whatever, and that's what happens. No, under this definition, what they're saying is, if you are a microbrewery as defined, you have to sell your own product here. That doesn't mean you can't sell your product to restaurants all over the country.
But it does mean that if we were one of those restaurants, we couldn't buy their product and sell it.
It means if you are a brew, a microbrewery, you can't sell, as currently defined, other people's product there. I think what's the rationale for that is, if someone's product is failing, then they become dependent. They essentially turn into a tavern, selling predominantly other people's stuff.
Right. Which I'm not against. I mean, I'm not, why do I want to say in the zoning that I'm giving some kind of preference against taverns? That's not my opinion. I mean, I feel like if a tavern is allowed to sell some guy's IPA, why can't, it may be a bad business decision, but why can't a microbrewery sell that same IPA?
And this would have, would this trigger anything with the liquor license? Again, are we crossing zoning into the licensing?
Yes. They would have to come in, apply for a license, state their business plan. The Village Board would have to approve an increase in the number of available licenses. And then the liquor commissioner could put whatever additional restrictions he or she wants. The liquor commissioner in this case is the mayor. Tom Mulhern is the deputy liquor commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, you're raising some good questions, Commissioner Sharp, and it's making me think. One other thing to keep in mind here is, you know, we want to craft rules that promote our downtown. And if we say that, if you're going to be producing things in big vats and you're a production facility, well, yeah, we'll let you go in the M district. And if you want to morph into a brew pub, well, we'll let you do that. That's what we're trying to do. But I would caution us from writing the rules so that someone can start as a brew pub, take out all their tanks, turn into a tavern, when we want taverns and restaurants in our downtown. So that might be one reason why we don't want to say, if you're a microbrewery, you can sell other people's beers. Because if you're selling other people's beers, you're a tavern and we don't want you in an industrial park. We want you in our downtown. So there's just another wrinkle in all of this.
Well, I think this whole thing was precipitated by the brewery in the manufacturing district, which morphed not because they were trying to be devious or anything like that. It just morphed into something that really isn't fitting in there now. And their space is too small. They have no parking. And they've turned out to be a very popular business. And so I can see where, you know, we're coming in back, you know, after the fact. But we don't want this to occur again. And because it's a popular phenomenon, it probably will. So we should have some guidelines to control it.
And this wouldn't preclude someone for applying for a special use for a microbrewery and then applying for a special use for another type of business use, such as with the bank. One of the details with the bank is that they had a separate, the original bank had a special use application for the drive-in lanes and the bank use. And then they had another special use along with it for an ATM. Those were listed separately in the use table. So I don't see a reason why that couldn't happen where you have a microbrewery that is also operating in this other way and they, you know, expressly stated in their application and then you consider the two separate uses.
What, I mean, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Going back to the example of, if it's, if we have a brew pub or a microbrewery downtown, that's its own product is failing or whatever, and it turns slowly over time into just a tavern, are we trying to avoid that? Or is that what we're trying to achieve through some of this, is avoiding letting those things slip into taverns?
I think it's a juggle between the liquor regulations, which have traditionally said, yes. We want to know how, what box you fit into. And you have to fit into one box. And they've been pretty liberal, the Village Board, in crafting liquor license classifications to accommodate a wide range of use. But still, a tavern is a tavern, which is some place that doesn't sell food and sells anyone's booze. Budweiser to Goose Island.
Actually, I would jump in and say the concern is not letting some businesses in the downtown. It's the opposite. It's allowing businesses in industrial parks that we would rather have downtown. And in fact, we were talking with this particular business in the industrial park about their parking concerns and their desire to grow. And there's a very prominent building, a block from here, that's been empty, I guess, for a decade. And we said, you want to grow? You keep saying you want to stay in Westmont. Why don't you talk to that landlord? And if your growing business could move into that prominent building in our downtown, it's a win-win for everyone. And they were like, well, the rents are cheaper here. It's like, well...
Have a tasting room downtown in production and in the district.
But the concern isn't about having businesses come into downtown. It's about maybe writing rules that let all of the businesses leave the downtown and go to cheaper rent areas.
Well, I do like what has been done with, as you go through the districts with B1 through M, the ratio that changes, I think that's very successful as a way to try to incentivize them to be in their appropriate district for their facility. I think that's really good.
And I do want to say one more thing in terms of the distinction and the difference with licensing. Alcohol is alcohol, whether it's produced wherever, you know, it is what it is, the CO, whatever that... So, but the distinction with a tavern is you've got distribution coming from elsewhere. You have trucks. And in terms of land use, that's what, you know, as a planner, we kind of want to focus on, is what is the property being used for? What is the impact to the community? You know, you have trucks driving in and out versus these big kegs or these big, what are they called?
Alan?
Producing drink. Of course, they do have raw materials. You have to look at how are they bringing that in, what type of trucks, what time of day? And those are the things we're looking at.
Two comments, if I may, besides what was already said. In the definition for microbrewery, microdistillery, it, there's the phrase, "and there are no outside impacts or outside storage."
Yes.
The outside storage, I understand. Outside impacts is really vague. I would recommend, in general, they're coming in for a special use. One of the special use standards is that you're not going to have adverse impacts on surrounding properties. So that's already built into our standards. I don't think we need that. If you have something in mind that you want to define better, you know...
No, I believe some of this was taken from, I researched through the industry websites, trying to figure out how they, how the industry defines it. trying to figure out how they, how the industry defines itself. For example, a microbrewery can be 55,000 barrels all the way to 60 million or whatever. So in trying to get a handle on what this was, I came across no outside impacts, so we could delete it. I haven't, I don't have anything in mind that I'm trying to find.
Yeah. I mean, odor is one of the biggest potential impacts from a microbrewery.
Yes.
But again, that's, I think would be taken on a case-by-case basis as they come in to determine whether if they're downtown, would they have an adverse impact on surrounding properties. My other comment had to do with the 25% restriction for total square foot of the premises designated for interior seating. So I understand that in a restriction, particularly in a manufacturing district, maybe even more strict. But downtown, for example, a brewpub just opened, microbrewery in downtown Glen Ellyn, after three years. It drove me crazy because I could almost zip line there. Anyhow, it's predominantly a restaurant, right? Beautiful buildout, but I can guarantee at least 50% of their space is devoted to restaurant use, and interior seating, and a beautiful bar, and they really produce small batch beer, and they don't have that big a production facility. So I believe that's perhaps a bit overrestrictive if someone wants to come in with a restaurant.
And overrestrictive and, or underrestrictive in M, because if you have a big manufacturing facility, 25% of that floor plate is a full restaurant. So I think if you're in the M district
Well, no, that 25% of the manufacturing is only of the retail area, the bar area, not, not the, it's not
It says 25% of the total square foot of the premises.
Oh, okay, for interior seating.
So if you have 100,000 square foot floor, I mean, that's a very good-sized restaurant that you can have that we don't want in the M district. We want that in a
Right, because right now restaurants aren't allowed in the M district.
So maybe it's only 10% or something of the floor plate?
Yeah.
It's just something I
You might want to limit it in the manufacturing district, the interior seating, because they can't have restaurants in the manufacturing district.
Oh, you're saying to like quantity of seats?
Percentage might be fine also. I just think it should be more restrictive than 25% and less restrictive in the other commercial districts.
Okay. Agreed.
My only concern, and I know we shouldn't be writing rules for a particular business, but if we write them so restrictive that the one existing brewpub that we have can't meet them, that's a concern. I don't know if the business that I keep referring to has more than 10% of its floor area for interior seating. It might, and then
They would be existing, not informing.
Yeah, they could be grandfathered, yeah.
I mean, they don't have the parking for more space anyhow. And regardless of what the rules say, they're still going to have to comply with parking. So if they show indoor seating in a manufacturing district, they'd have to have corresponding parking. And you have got that laid out, what's required.
Correct, yeah.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
What do you think?
Thirsty?
Just thinking.
Apples?
I think they're the taste for beer.
Now, Lenny?
Yes?
I thought you were
Well, I wanted to get into square footages again. In speaking with the user on the business that's located on Cass Avenue, they said anything less than 1,500 square feet would be too small for any of it, you know. And also, the 25% for the seating area in the manufacturing district came out, I believe, based on the license that they did receive, which was 25%, if I remember correctly. And what I thought would be, we could set a limit, 25% or up to, or whichever is greater or lesser. That type of language might be helpful as well. So we'll kind of play with that a little bit and see what we come up with.
I like that second idea. 25% not to exceed X square feet.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
I also like, maybe to dovetail it into the parking ratio too, the parking requirements. We don't necessarily want to limit it to the square footage of the facility, but what kind of parking do you have, and how many people can you actually get there?
Taverns are regulated in terms of number of seats.
Right.
And we did talk about that, and we decided that, you know, we weren't able to decide or determine how many seats would be able to be filled, you know, in 25% of a certain square, you know. How do you come up with a number of seats? If you have stools versus larger chairs and that kind of thing. So we thought square footage would be a better approach.
But is it square footage of the whole facility or of the seating area?
The square footage of the seating area would be used to calculate the exterior. So it would kind of, you know, give you that sense of scale as well.
Yeah, the only people you have to park is the ones that are going to be sitting other than your manufacturing people.
Do we know if the existing tavern licenses come with restriction on the 100 or 100 or 1,000 feet from schools?
Yes, all liquor establishments, that's state law.
Right, but do we have a more restrictive zoning ordinance that, I just want to make sure that we don't tell them that they have to be 1,000, and then we tell microbreweries they have to be only 100. I just want to make sure that we're consistent.
We'll double check.
Yeah, I recommend being consistent.
If you dovetail this into the parking requirement, then you're only addressing the overall issue depending upon where you're at. Because the parking in the manufacturing district is different than the
Right.
business district. So if you tie it to the parking requirement, now you don't have the condition that we have now where, you know, you don't have the parking, the amount of people that are going there. So it's, yeah, maybe tying it to that.
Now, there's, zoning cannot fix issues that are, you know, business-related or space-related or retail, you know. There's some things that cannot be fixed. For myself, I looked at the parking spaces and placing seating areas, screening, safety. The particular business in the manufacturing district does not have parallel parking. It has perpendicular parking. And you run the risk of safety issues with cars driving possibly into the area. That there is no sidewalk, no setback. There's really no play, no space in that particular area. So it's going to be difficult from a design point of view or site plan point of view. And zoning cannot really address those issues.
Well, their success may be to go for a different location. Hopefully, it'll be in Westmont.
But if
Up north, between Cass and the Ty Warner Park.
I'm in.
If a facility was in the M district and they grew, and they did want to have a tasting room, that would not be allowed, right, right now? I mean, the closest thing to that would just be a tavern.
It would be allowed under the liquor license, which says if you're in an M district, since your primary purpose is manufacturing, you can have an ancillary use, which is a tasting room, but the liquor code provides limits on how big that can be. So that was permitted for this place that currently exists without, I think, corresponding consideration of parking or forcing them to apply for variance for their lack of parking, which probably in hindsight should have been done.
But someone that wants to come in and occupy a storefront downtown that has a distribution or production facility in Westmont, and so it doesn't fit into a microbrewery because they're not making it there. They're just selling it there. What does that classify as from a zoning use standpoint?
They're not making it, they're just selling it? That's a tavern, and that would be allowed downtown?
Subject to getting
Except we're not giving out any new licenses.
Subject to getting a liquor license, which may or may not be allowed.
If the microbrewery stayed where it is, brought its product to downtown.
If the business in the manufacturing district only produced beer, that's perfect.
And then they, and then they designated their
And if they had a second location
Yes.
in the downtown where they sold their product, then that would be a restaurant or a tavern, and that would be perfect too.
Yeah.
It'd be very clean.
Okay.
Again, if they would have to have
Would be the answer.
A different liquor retail.
And everything I just said is for zoning. The liquor licenses are different, and you and we don't get involved with that. John does, because he works with the liquor commissioner. But the Planning and Zoning Commission and our Community Development Department really doesn't get involved in liquor licenses. We just deal with defining if it's a tavern or a restaurant or a brewpub or a production facility, and then through zoning, we say where those can and can't go.
But I haven't heard of anyone ever doing it unless they really get
I'm dreaming. I'm just dreaming.
They really get big, like Goose Island, Revolution, where they could have retail outlets in other places, but that's
I want to try to think ahead.
Yeah.
What we're talking about.
Well, especially with increased density downtown that's being proposed and is likely to come to fruition, more than likely, an application could come in for a microbrewery/ brewpub, and it's good to have this planned for.
I agree.
Yeah.
So next steps, if we're winding down this discussion, and we don't have to, but if we are, this has been very helpful input. I think Nalini and I will continue to draft and maybe work a little more intensely or closely with the village attorney so that for next month, we can have hopefully some pretty finely crafted language definitions, et cetera. Would you guys be ready for us to publicize a public hearing, meaning we would come with something that's pretty much almost ready to be voted on, or do you want another month of discussion before we do a public hearing?
I'm talked out of this.
I think we should
I think we're ready.
Yeah.
So we'll take all this input. We'll continue refining and improving. We'll work with the village attorney. We'll put it into a recommended form. We'll put a notice in the newspaper that we're going to have a discussion about new rules for this topic. And then next month, we'll have a public hearing, and you can vote on it. And it can still be tweaked, but hopefully we'll have it awfully darn close to its final form.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Chair would entertain a motion to continue this to next month?
Actually, we don't even have to do that because this wasn't published in the newspaper. So it was not a public hearing tonight. This was an internal discussion. So I think what Bruce said is they will publish this for a public hearing for the next meeting.
Understood. Thank you.
Next item is, we're nearing the end, miscellaneous. Actually, I'm going to backtrack. Nalini just reminded me, we did publish it so it could be considered at a public hearing for a vote tonight. So should we continue it so that we don't have to republish?
Yes.
Okay. So if you could vote to continue it, that would just save us from spending $100 on another legal notice.
Okay. In that sense, then we have been in a public hearing. Therefore, Chair will entertain a motion to
In that case, can you formally open up the public hearing? Because I think we went right to discussion. You don't necessarily, yeah.
Understood.
And then, and then ask for a motion to continue.
Okay. Public hearing is open now. Chair will entertain a motion to continue.
Some of
PZ 19020 until next month.
Move by Mr. Sharp.
Yep. Motion by Commissioner Sharp, second by Commissioner Thomas.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Van Dern, vote yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartel?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes, sir.
Okay. See you next month.
Thank you.
Next item, miscellaneous update. So I have several. This is kind of funny. September is going to be an interesting meeting because we're not only going to be talking about beer, but staff will be coming with some preliminary suggestions for how the village could regulate recreational marijuana. So it'll be
That's timely.
It'll be the beer and marijuana meeting.
Samples?
I hope we'll use a similar process to what we just did for microbreweries and microdistilleries. We'll come with our thoughts, our initial ideas and suggestions, run those by you, and get your feedback for how you want us to fine-tune it or maybe alter direction a little bit so that the following month, we could then have a public hearing and formally adopt zoning rules for where recreational marijuana would be allowed and under what circumstances. Just very briefly here, so people understand what's brought us to this point on that topic. The state passed a law that says, starting in January of 2020, recreational marijuana will be allowed to be sold and used in Illinois. I don't know the details. The village attorney might know them better than I do, but each community needs to decide whether they will allow that in their community or not. So that's the first step. And I believe the village board has already had a preliminary discussion and said it's leaning in the direction of saying that Westmont, that they will vote to allow Westmont to be a community that does allow the sale of recreational marijuana. They could have done, or they, I suppose, still could do the opposite and say, we're not going to allow it, and then we wouldn't have to go through the exercise of writing rules. But because the village board has already indicated that they're leaning towards saying Westmont will be a place where it's allowed, then we need to go through the process of writing the zoning rules for where and how it will be allowed. So preliminary discussion in a month, and then hopefully in October, am I doing that right? Yeah. In October, then, we would have a public hearing and formally adopt the rules so that they'd be in place by January 1st. So that's just a quick update or a report on that item. I don't know if people have questions or if we want to discuss that at all, or
That's not, this will not fall under the liquor commission?
No.
It won't, definitely.
It will not. It's regulated by the state. Licenses for dispensaries are given exclusively by the state, just like video gaming is regulated exclusively by the state. So all we can do is say, as a village, here's zoning district where dispensaries are allowed or not allowed.
So we'll be working on some ideas, and we'll present those next month. Second report, tomorrow night at the village board meeting, there is a very strong likelihood that the village board will officially designate a later start time for the September meeting. The September meeting is on September 11th, and there are some ceremonies in the community, and there's one earlier in the evening. And so to allow people the opportunity to go to that ceremony earlier, the village board or the mayor, I'm not sure which, may say that the official start time for the September meeting is possibly 7:30 or even as late as 8:00. That's going to be something that I believe is decided tomorrow. So once I find out what that decision is, I'll pass that on to all of you, but I just wanted to give you a heads up. And then the third item is just a preview of the items that are currently tentatively scheduled for the agenda in September, and it will be a very full agenda. So we're going to be starting late, and we've already got a full agenda. There's two items from tonight. There's the Raisin Canes item that was continued, and there was the discussion we just had about microbreweries and microdistilleries that was continued. And in addition to those two items from tonight, there's a request from a business to move into the former Jeans Tire, is it Jeans Tire?
Yeah.
And sell and service lift equipment, like the big lifts that, you know, work on third and fourth floors of buildings. There is a request from the village to add fuel pumps for village-owned vehicles at the fire station on South Cass. And our zoning says that that, the fire station use is a special use because that property is actually zoned residential. And we've got records that a special use was granted, I think, in the 80s for the fire station. So what we're going to propose is that there's an amendment to that special use because, again, we've determined in community development that adding fuel pumps is a pretty substantial change, and we want to err on the side of caution. So we're making the village go through the process of amending the special use permit of the fire station to add fuel pumps. And that way, we'll notify neighbors, and people will have a chance to come and speak at a public hearing. So that's the second new item. And then the third new item is kind of exciting, and some of you may have heard about this. The Market Center project, which you recommended approval of about a year ago, is slowly developing. Raisin Canes is an example. LA Fitness has come into our department for permits, but the developers are proposing some modifications to that development in terms of the users and in terms of the configuration of some of the buildings on the lot or on that large property. And the changes that they're proposing, both of the use and the arrangement of the buildings, requires your review and recommend, recommendation for approval so it can go to the village board. That is also on the agenda for September. So it'll be a pretty full agenda. Anybody else have anything?
I have one thing.
Yes?
Something's come up that we have championed through DuPage County, a few other municipalities that could be a benefit to Westmont.
So there could be a what?
It could be a benefit to Westmont. And that is that what I've done in Lombard and a few other areas is we've bifurcated lots within any district, any residential district, any commercial district or business district, to not necessarily require the need for flood insurance. So what's happening is if we have, for example, in Westmont, if we have residential buildings and lots
and lots that people have paid flood insurance for many years, they could bifurcate their lot but not create a non-conforming use, have an A and a B, but have A and B contribute towards the zoning setbacks and everything. But the building is actually on a separate lot, which then reduces the requirement or takes away the requirement for flood insurance. I did this successfully in a school in Lombard, Butterfield School, where they own a big property, and they were paying $20,000 a year for flood insurance. And I separated into the subdivision of the lot, creating two lots, one with the building and one without the buildings, in the floodplain, and it saved them the $20,000 a year on flood insurance. And I look at Westmont, and I look at a lot of rear yards, for example, that the floodplain will never get to the house, or it's... And if we just was able to have the zoning altered with a text amendment to do that, the county has already done that. The county has done it for a different reason, for land acquisition on right-ofways, where if they have to have a taking on a corner for a signal or a turn lane or something, and it creates a non-conforming lot on the corner, they have provisions for that in their ordinance already. So, the county was real receptive to doing something like that, and it really benefits, could benefit our residents. So, I would like to see that explored here because there are a lot of properties that require flood insurance that may not necessarily need it because their building is not even close. And all it is is just a matter of allowing the zoning ordinance to separate the lot into two lots, but have all the regulatory issues related to setbacks remain.
Do you know if Lombard's zoning ordinance has language addressing that that you could share with us and we could start...
The county does.
The county does. Do you know of any municipality? Because we do have minimum lot requirements, and if you split a lot so that the lower rear yard is separate, I would be curious how they write language to address the non-conforming lot.
Yes, and we also did it successfully in Plainfield, where we actually reclaimed strip mines that were used for gravel, and now they're lake developments. And they have walkouts to the lake, but the lot is an A lot and a B lot.
If you could share that language, we could certainly look at it.
Because that would save a lot of residents in our town a lot of money on insurance if we could do that. A lot of business owners as well, property owners. I will get you the language, but it looks like it's something that could really be a benefit to Westmont.
Yeah. Bruce, were you going to discuss the East Quincy Corridor?
We are speaking with the Chamber of Commerce to try to find a location that's suitable for the community along the East Quincy Corridor to attend a community forum. So, as soon as we have, we will have a report at the next meeting as to when this meeting will be. And it will be basically to rezone the portion of properties on the north side of East Quincy to match the existing uses, mostly.
Do we have a target date?
The target date would be sometime in September for approval in October, is what our target is.
So, that's, it's going to be like a presentation or charrette with that meeting?
Yes. The idea would be to provide a couple of options based on the conversations we've had before and the meetings we've had before.
And part of that, to be blunt, is for your benefit, so that the first opportunity the property owners in that area have to speak is at a more informal community open house rather than after they get some notice in the newspaper that the property across the street's going to be rezoned from residential to manufacturing, and their first chance to speak is here to you. So, we're trying to just say, hey, this is coming. What do you think? Do you want us to tweak it? Get people's involvement, and then present it to you.
We're also choosing that location of Westmont Center because it is one of the properties that are involved, and we're hoping that community residents will walk down the street and really take notice of what's going on on their way to that meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have anything else? Like upcoming in the rest of the month, on Saturday, the 24th, the Public Works Department is having their groundbreaking, 11 o'clock in the morning, down Burlington. And on the 30th is at the post office on South Cass. There's a ceremony for renaming the Westmont Post Office for Sergeant Jimmy Robinson, who was killed in Vietnam. He was a little boy in Westmont and was posthumously awarded the Medal of Honor. So, that's on the 30th. And if no one has anything else, then I would entertain...
I would just, I think we should all thank you for your first meeting sharing it. I thought you did a great job.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yes, good job.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Sharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.